We're live, sir.
We're gonna start. You guys have anything else? Point area. Robert, Robert, we're gonna start. So, welcome to the broadband authority meeting. Looking around the room and I see a forum presence. So let's call this meeting order. First item on the agenda or second item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Has everyone had a chance to review it?
Yep.
Any changes? Then I move, we approve this agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, this is the agenda. Brief announcements by authority members. Anybody have any announcements? Seeing none, we'll move right along. Item four, public comment. See, do we have any members of the public and if so, you've got four attendees out there plus a few people here in the room. If you raise your hand either electronically or personally, and we'll call on you, you can have three minutes to tell us what's on your mind if you'd like to. Give folks a moment or two to find that button. And see, oh, no, there's just somebody else joining, see no other, no hands going up. We'll move on. Next item is the consent agenda, which was attached with the agenda for the whole meeting. Any comments on this consent agenda? There are motion to approve.
Okay.
Motion in a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none? Move on to the December fifth meeting minutes. Bill, did you get any substantive comments back on those minutes?
Just one embarrassing typo.
Ah, just a typo, okay. Is there a motion to approve the minutes? The second. In second, and all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Minutes are approved, thank you very much. All business. Body 2021 update. Mike, you want to take it?
Thank you, Chair, just to update the board on the happenings with DHCD, Brightspeed and the broadband authority. Since the letter of intent, we had an extension to the project to June 3, 2024, so that was our third extension. One of the requirements is that we're going to have to amend our agreement with Brightspeed in order to to make all of this whole. And that will include some funding recommendations, you know, lowering the amount of funding the state is providing and lowering the amount of funding the broadband authority is providing. So the 640K that's encumbered for Brightspeed will be reduced. And the amount of funding coming from body 2021 will also be reduced. And those have to be done through amendment. So we'll be working with DHCD over the next month and we're targeting the February 28th update to make sure that everybody gets to sign and vote on on those particular items. It's just the paperwork part of everything, so.
And this is moving forward. This to codify things that we have already approved.
Exactly.
So shouldn't necessarily need to come before the authority again.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, yes.
So I think it will be a contract amendment, the way it's been drafted, it's going to be circulated. So I believe it will have to come before this body for.
True.
I don't think we had a general approval for anyone to to to
Decide a contract.
To accept the contract, that's my recollection, we just.
Well, I agree, I just was, since we're not materially changing the terms, I was one of what we had previously agreed, I wonder if if we, if it's something we need to approve, is that timely for when you want to get this done, Mike? Waiting till the next meeting?
No, it's not time, I mean, June 3 would be time, like, we can't put it off till the end of the project.
No, no, but addressing this at the next meeting is, that means you're, it's okay. Very good, then we'll just plan for that on the agenda at the next meeting.
So you said the ABBA's contribution is reduced also?
Yes. If you have that number, Jason, I can bring it up, I can search it up.
Just curious, how much?
Approximately $80,000.
Okay, thank you.
But that those monies will not be available for the secretary's fund, just to be clear, Bill.
It's gonna be available for something. Thanks.
Okay, Mike?
Okay, so we've been pressing, obviously, for the Gilbert Station Road, the the primary locations that were left out. You know, we still are of the opinion that multiple areas of the county were left out. That was decided with DACD that the Gilbert Station Road locations will be included in the letter of intent. So the reduction in the costs are reflective of, oh, next, next slide, thank you, sir. Yeah. The reduction of the the cost was where we landed as a as a as an agreement. So Brightspeed is permitted to walk away from areas that we submitted were to be done, except for Gilbert Station, and as part of that submittal, both the state and the broadband authority are reducing their funding. So I'll give it that in a minute, but it essentially, the locations that are in the letter of intent, they seem to be on schedule. You know, we keep, you know, we talk to them every other week about this particular item. We have to do monthly reports with DACD and this, it's very important that each month, you know, Brightspeed give us an update on where they are with the Gilbert Station Road, which my opinion has been just make it happen and so that you're out of the woods, but there just seems to be holdups after holdups, but they're reporting that they're getting there. So things are, things are working in the right way, they're not falling behind and they're not having problems leading their commitments. They're just moving slowly, getting to them. The other thing that I I need to report on the 2021 update is that we almost weekly, we're hearing from one or more residents that lines that have been put in either directly across the ground or in trees along people's property lines have been there since the day that Brightspeed came out and did their install, always you know, indicating that they're going to be back to bury those lines, meaning they're going to take those same lines and and put them underground. In some cases, rather than putting them, putting the existing lines underground, they're coming in and having to redo the entire run. We've seen a couple of those happen because the lines that they've run through the tree aren't qualified for doing underground deployment. So that a crew will come out and take one line out and then put another line in.
And these are all local drops, they're they're not, you know, they're not transmission lines.
Right, they're not, yeah, you're not what are typically called lateral lines. These are all, you know, last mile or to the home drops. Essentially, you know, what we've been asking for is a complete plan to to try to bring us to some sort of recognition that the the lines are out there, the inventory of the lines are there and they're all being scheduled. We haven't heard that yet, although I have to say we've had a lot of good reports from the community that when once these things have been reported, crews are coming out within a a timely fashion and and they're in bronze, and that's working.
I thought it's something that requires a report. How do they not know, in Turkey Sag Road where I live, it's running through the trees, it's it's going across driveways, like, the fact that they don't know this is, I didn't know that I could be further appalled by Brightspeed, but here I am, it's is really appalling.
Yeah. So it's important for the community, in some cases, and we've had one of these, and I can, I can report this, I think, because it's public domain. In some cases, people just get tired, you know, it's like, I'm not going to report it to Brightspeed. Instead, I'm just going to get my trench out and do it myself. So, you know, when people start doing that, we get very concerned, that's definitely something, so our preference is is that if if people are listening and and as we get the word out, please let them contact BAO at almarl.org and we'll work with Brightspeed to get them out there and and put these things underground. You know, obviously with the snow and everything that happened, it was probably difficult to make this happen, but we're seeing Brightspeed be a little more conscientious as well as when something gets reported to them, they are, they are sending crews out to fix them. So that's a positive sign. We'd love to have a plan, but instead, we're just taking them Siri item as they come in, we're sending them over.
And we have no power at this point contractually to like compel them to do anything, we're just in the same position as always as a county where we have to say, what is wrong with you, please fix this thing, we can't make them do anything, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
Unfortunately. Yes. So the last issue is, as the broadband authority is aware, we have not submitted to the state for reimbursement and we have also not required the broadband authority to pay out any funds for body 21. So we're still at zero expenditures. As part of the letter of intent, Brightspeed was supposed to have had their reimbursement request in by the end of the year, so December 30, December 31, 2023. Continuing to press on that, they have not had success working with what was once their parent company, Lumen. So there's a requirement that they have to get information from Lumen and Lumen has not been able to prioritize that, so sort of in a holding pattern. And I don't know, you know, all that is is, the only issue there is that Brightspeed is without those funds. So that, you know, they're paid for all of this using their own funds and to be reimbursed, they have to show actual invoices, et cetera, et cetera, goes on and on in order for us to review and and make a determination on reimbursement. Thus far, they haven't provided that information.
There is an irony here. The Brightspeed can't get Lumen to do the necessary work to get done what they need to get done, which is of course the same problem that we had with Brightspeed. Well, they'll probably be more empathetic as a result of this.
Yeah, it's the same sort of lack of information that'll make a tribute to why they don't know where things are not buried, so.
Yeah.
Some some information, transmission didn't occur that you might have wished to have had occur.
Bottom line, though, it's their responsibility to provide the right, information before we process everything.
Right.
We will.
It is not our concern and that we're.
They're aware, we're aware and we're awaiting further information from them.
Correct.
And we have shared with both DACD contacts and DACD guidance regarding these invoices to make clear the extent of the documentation that is expected in order for us to be able to approve both invoices for ABBA funds as well as DACD funds.
Should be incentive to do it.
All right, sir.
Any other questions on body 21s? Great, okay. Well, we're fortunate to have Gary Wood and Dennis Reese with us in the audience from Sevec and Firefly. So thank you all for for coming to the meeting this evening. Hopefully you got a chance to meet Mike Pruitt, he's the new representative from Scottsville District and appointed to the broadband authority. So, welcome, Mike, these guys are are great. That's all I'm just saying. You know, construction work is continuing, there's connections going on in the Appalachian Power Red Hill section, which you can see in the the midsection of of the map. There were successful railroad crossings made to make that happen. And we're we're monitoring a submission that Dominion, the broadband authority also supported, supported this submission to the SEC, so there's hundreds of documents in that submission on the SEC site. And we're monitoring that, don't see any holdups other than the SEC is not fully staffed, but essentially, you know, looking forward to getting the Dominion areas. We have a lot of questions from the community that that come in, when people reference that that they're not sure or what are in any of the RISE areas, they should, they should be contacting us and knowing that they're going to be served by the end of 2025. Sometimes it just helps for us, for the broad broadband office, just to talk them through why these sections of the county haven't been named yet, they will eventually be named. Some people get a little skeptical about, well, they're not really coming to do this area. And I'm like, no, they're they're coming to do your area, they just haven't named it yet. So it's just something that helps when we talk to individuals about why they haven't been named and, you know, potentially when they will be named. And, you know, a lot of this is just showing there's prior maps where sections weren't named. You can see gradually these sections are getting named and eventually you will see yours. So that's good for that, then. I'm glad Gary and Dennis are here, in case there's any questions, there was a change for the Keen area for Appalachian Power, that's one of our most critical need areas of the county, especially around the Esmont area and Ganty Community Center. We know we have a lot of need in that specific area. So we're hoping that moving to 2025, that'll be in early 25, originally scheduled for fall of 24. So, you know, hopefully a new day will be showing up there. And the rest of the things, you know, we're very happy that, you know, nothing has changed on the Dominion Electric areas that that have already been added. And as we, as we say to the people who call in, your your area is going to be added to this list, so just just keep, keep looking at the Almarl County Partners page and you you'll see an update as they have a a chance to get it going. The other thing that's that's hard to put on this list, but it's important to understand is that the work that's going on in Green County with the Rappahannock Electric Company, their service area extends into the northern part of Almarl in two different sections. So there are residents of Northern Almarl who are receiving Firefly. So in a sense, they've they've got us cornered. You guys have us in every corner of the county and we really appreciate the hard work that's that's come into play here to to get these folks connected, so very, very good stuff. Lots of great work coming out of the TJPDC, we really thank, thank them for their partnership on on making this huge project happen. I think it's 15 counties, but I just want to, you know, make sure, we show this every every month, it's not broken down for the county, this is specific to the entire project. So when you see 600, 6,700 passings, that's not all in Almarl County, that's that's for the the progress that has been made as of December 2023 across all 15 counties. So good stuff there, just the best way we can update it. We get a quarterly update that breaks this down further, so once a quarter, the broadband authority will see a more specific to Almarl. That that makes sense. Okay. I think that might have been it for 22, if there's questions or.
Well, before we move on to the project, is there anything that our friends from Firefly would like to add to that?
Working hard. We are making some progress, we've still got, I think, six Rapp29 crossings to make. When we do a Rapp29 crossing, you figure fleet officers on each side, north and south, you want to slow roll, slow the traffic down, as well as multiple traffic control personnel who are flagging at every place, we actually have to have a flagger each driveway in the area for the two miles that we're covering. So it's a, it's a fairly big project, we've had a couple of pickups there because of everybody showing up except the state police. And we've talked to Mike some, we've we've talked about Almarl County. We've got another plan for six of those, I think the remaining six in two days, so hopefully we'll get everybody there, we have finished the railroad crossings, I think there's one little cleanup thing, but we have light across. And we're, we're making good price, good progress with splicing in the Red Hill area. They have started doing make ready field data collection in Keen, they're mostly finished. Should be finished soon, then the design work happens after that and some rideouts and then the crews come in later. The reason that the team got moved a little bit is Appalachian Power did some things internally in terms of switching out crews who are all make ready. So going into November, we had six crews actively working. They decided to have a different makeup of crews, so there had been mostly three man crews and they're going to larger crews because they found the type of work they were doing, they needed more places with two buckets and those type of things. So as they took the old crews out, the new crews didn't show up right away. So there's a little drop off there. And so we're trying to figure out exactly how much that's going to impact us and what our options are to speed them back up. And we incidentally, put out some data, I see in a couple of places where we hadn't made final determinations yet because we've still got some meetings with them and and then looking at things we can do to try to get everybody connected as fast as we can in Keen and everywhere else we're going. We we don't have any further update from Dominion, who still anticipates, I think, around the first of April, maybe getting a a response from the FCC on their filing. And that will allow them to lease some areas fairly quickly, they've already finished a little bit of construction. And then they'll be taking up the rest of construction in Almarl in a few years. We'll try to coordinate that, so pretty soon after they're finished, we'll finish in St. Mary's. We have a lot of work still to do. We're working every day. And don't mind if you ever have questions, some, Dennis has had.
I I have a question, it's something that I feel confident that we've talked about and I, we just can't remember the answer. Looking at the schedule of the Dominion areas being served in spring 2024, Dominion needs SEC approval before they're allowed to sell that as a service? So they're spending the money, assuming because regulatory capture, I assume the SEC does what they tell them to do. There's not a blocker for them doing anything right now? Okay, great, I was a little nervous about the spring 2024 date if that was a blocker.
They are, they have been working since last year, pretty actively. I think they've got all their engineering done and a good bit of the construction done. They still have some splicing doing, still have construction in some areas, but they've been working pretty regularly since last year. And they are taking the risk that the risk that the SEC doesn't exactly approve, but it's a a pretty minimal risk. Because it's following the code for what they're allowed to do.
Thank you.
So that takes on to the BAO update?
So I'll be handling that, we've got three updates and the first is going to be on the digital inclusion trailblazers. The work that you already perceived, and then we're going to talk about ACP wind down and its impacts in Almarl County and then the digital opportunity plan. So I'll start here, the National Digital Inclusion Alliance awarded Almarl County a 2023 Digital Inclusion Trailblazers Award. This reflects all of the work that ABBA has done, all the work that Office has done and all the work that our partners, including our provider partners, have done to address digital equity in Almarl County and in our community more broadly. This is a really exciting moment for the county to be recognized for being among, I believe it's 47 total, yeah, 47 total counties, localities that are are taking this seriously, providing staff time, providing opportunities for boards and commissions to serve to. And so I wanted to take a moment to to thank you all, but also to to note that this is a really big deal, and so I'll be attending net inclusion in 2021, 2024 in Philadelphia this February and I will happily return to share the award with you all.
How does the award get decided, nominated?
So there is a panel among the NDA community that evaluates applications. We submitted an application on behalf of Almarl County in December, November, I believe. And it includes things like the charter for this organization, the commendations that we received from the county as well as evidence of activity in both actively addressing but also participating in statewide and regional efforts. And so as as I I like to point out whenever I have the opportunity, Director Culp has been working towards these goals for years, long before establishment of ABBA. And so he deserves a huge amount of this recognition because it's that work that he did that really should have been recognized years ago as as evidence of Almarl County's status as a digital inclusion trailblazer and his own trailblazing.
I just have to point out, as I look through the list of localities there, there's some exceptions, but mostly really like Newark, Philadelphia, Pittsburgh, Boston, Austin, San Francisco. Like the work y'all have set up here, we're clearly punching way above our weight.
And it's great that we're number one.
I love that.
As I pointed out, I follow county guidance to address ourselves as the county of Almarl and they saw fit to address us as Almarl County and that has a benefit.
Yeah, good work, guys.
Any other questions on that? Okay, so just a few weeks ago, the FCC acknowledging and recognizing that Congress had not acted yet to address the eventual depletion of the Affordable Connectivity Program Fund sent a letter to the appropriate chairs of committees to let them know that because of that inaction, they were going to begin the wind down process of ACP. The program is expected to have its last full month of funding in April. This is actually something that has been recognized as a potential for a while. And it is the timing that required the FCC to send this notice now. There, the last day to enroll for the service is February 7, which is just a few weeks away. And for for us here in the office and in the Digital Inclusion Coalition that we have helped to convene, this is a really hard moment because one of the things that ends on the 7th is the ACP outreach grant that we applied for as part of the coalition and from which only recently did we manage to hire, train and start deploying for digital navigators. This is something that really hit hard when I first saw the notice. We are, I'll talk about what we're going to do with with them in a minute, but in the next few weeks, having checked in with Director Damick, as well as talking to leaders in the FCC and in the digital inclusion community, we're committed to signing up as many people as possible between now and February 7 to ensure that those that are eligible have an opportunity to receive this benefit, but also to begin a relationship with our navigators, so that way we can usher them through the wind down, should it happen in a controlled way. We are also looking at opportunities to be advocates for extending ACP. There is currently legislation in both houses that has bipartisan support to add $7 billion to the ACP fund and get it to the end of the year, at which point there will hopefully be an opportunity to create a more permanent funding source. That is kind of separate from the day to day, and the day to day is that should this program end, over 2,600 households in Almarl County would have to make some hard decisions about whether they would start paying for internet themselves or whether they would go without.
What was that number?
2,600.
That sounded so big, it was implausible, that's why I wanted to read that, okay.
Across the coalition footprint, it is nearly 8,000 households, so this is obviously a top priority. The good news, if we can call it that, is that we have until April to make plans and to deploy those plans to implement them, so that is ongoing. I I don't have a bullet point for it. The coalition that we built has two things that are running in parallel right now. One is a digital navigator pilot, we discussed that on prior ABBA meetings. The goal originally with that was that we would have two different teams of navigators working in slightly different ways. One grant funded through the ACP, focused on ACP, and the other focused more generally on establishing a digital digital navigator program throughout the community. We are accelerating plans for the digital navigator pilot and shifting those navigators to that program. They have committed a lot of time and a lot of spirit and and energy towards this role, and so I want to give them the opportunity to continue doing that work. So our partners at JABA and in the coalition are going to help us transition them to that role. That will give us six to nine months of navigators ahead of funding from the Digital Equity Act and the Broadband Equity Access and Deployment Fund. The other thing that we're going to be doing, and The other thing that we're gonna be doing, um, and that starts tomorrow with uh our next RDP meeting. Um, is beginning the process of uh more formally establishing the coalition. Um, tomorrow, we're going to be establishing a steering committee and uh uh appointing a fiscal agent. Uh, that will be able to uh grant its five oh one C three status to the coalition for the purposes of fundraising. As well as applying for uh and pursuing grant opportunities. Um, this is going to help to create uh. Opportunities for these funds to come in um in a way that reflects uh the next piece of information that we're gonna talk about, which is. Um, all right, yep. All right, um, the digital opportunity plan that uh was published by the Commonwealth uh. Recently, um, we had an opportunity to provide public comment on the initial draft. Um, I believe that the draft uh that they have finalized is much improved. Um, it reflects uh the importance of affordability, uh device access and digital skills, uh whereas prior uh. The prior draft uh wasn't quite as strong in those areas. And one of the things that it does is it establishes that. Coalitions can be included in funding opportunities. Previous, the previous draft uh. Suggested that CAA's community action agencies um would be the primary means of funneling these uh these funds. To uh community groups on the ground that were doing the work. Um, we made sure that coalitions could be included, so that way. Um, the work that we've put in as a coalition uh can be recognized and then um can benefit from this funding opportunity. Any questions on that? That was a lot. I apologize.
Sounds like there's a lot more work to do. And a lot of people who are gonna be hit by the ACP.
So the importance of the digital navigators that Jason so aptly brought on board with funding of a grant, the ACP outreach. It's, it's very intuitive, very creative for him to think about using some funding that came from outside the county. Um, that will continue their operations, meaning our digital navigators will move from. Bringing people onto the ACP to helping them decide how to continue to keep affordable internet. In their household, so. We're looking forward to a continuation of that. Um. We'd love to have them on board, but at this point, we're going to move them out to a different grant funded. Uh, process. Makes sense and, and good thing that they're staying. I mean, you would, you would consider it's like, okay, I got hired by the county. Three months later, I'm being told that the grant that's funding me is being ended. What's, what's going to happen with me? And Jason has done an outstanding job keeping them settled and convincing all three that they're gonna stay on. So great work, great people work, appreciated.
Any questions for Jason? You said there is possible legislation being considered to extend this and. Yeah. Do we have any idea where that's at this point?
Um, it is not uh assigned to committee hearing. Uh, unfortunately, um, at least in the House. Uh, it is uh in appropriations, which is locked down on uh the budget negotiations, which won't be resolved until March. So it's unlikely to get time uh before appropriations. Congress is a weird beast and there's always a possibility that someone will come up with a strategy that can usher it across the line in some other way. Um, but at present, um, it does not have any activity um on in either the House or the Senate.
Some of the opposition to this is. New. Historically, Congress is happy to give large amounts of money to telecom companies. They think it's swell, but the objection this time seems to be. Uh, these are people. Who might otherwise be able to pay for broadband, so what's the sense in giving them money? It's the. It's the same line of thinking that says if somebody has a microwave and a television, they must be rich, therefore they don't require any sort of. Uh, social services. Um, I think it's some of these same people in Congress who have decided they just oppose ACP. Uh, on, on a matter of principle, and it's unclear that it even get past that.
Anything else? Thank you very much, Jason. On, on our agenda, item number eight, new business to discuss the proposed for Digital General Assembly twenty twenty four. Full attachments and make ready for telecommunications systems. We had a request from our partner Firefly to uh look carefully at this and consider whether this was a good thing or not. And by the way, they thought it was maybe not such a good thing. And uh. Noted that there might be opportunities for us to uh voice our opinion on that. And uh. Read through the materials we had there. My next reaction was maybe we could get them to come explain it to us. So I, I invited uh Mr. Wood uh and anyone he'd care to bring. Uh, to come tell us what we needed to know, so we could have an informed opinion on this, on this matter. Because these guys are our partners and if there's a way we can help, we wanna help.
Uh. Let me give you. A high level view and I'm trying to stay out of the weeds. This is a complex. Idea. Um. It's really simple that, that I, first of all, I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to come and talk. Um, and it actually affects the electric co-op more than a little bit of that Firefly. Um, so this is a bill that is being um. Uh promoted by us, a couple of ISPs, one in particular and a couple in general out of the state. Uh, who had bids in and received awards, body awards in other areas, not in this area. Uh, that included money for make ready work, just like everybody would do, ours did. And they underbid. And now they had said. Well, we should have electric co-ops and it's only effective for electric calls. It. Um, carved out Appalachian Power and Dominion. The bill actually, original draft included them and when they stood up their lobbying teams, they got. So it's, it's just co-ops now. It says that if a larger pole needs to be. Uh, put in place to have plants for the fiber or enough strength for the fiber. Under most conditions, um, that the electric co-op will pay that. Previously, if the. Internet company needed a larger pole, the internet. Firefly pays for all of the make ready. That's called make ready work when you're making the pole ready. And Firefly is paying for all of the make ready work on Appalachian Power and Rappahannock and Dominion and Southside. And that's weird. He did the same thing on Central Virginia Electric. Uh, we believe it's unfair to go back and change the rules after the game has been played. The words have been said. And we really believe it's unfair when it could lead to the Rappahannock customers who in. Albemarle, or the Central Virginia Electric customers in Albemarle. Paying because one of those companies is forced to put in larger poles by internet provider in some other county. Who didn't bid properly and now electric rates go up to pay for that new construction. It really has nothing to do with the electric system. So it's a shifting of costs. Um. Really with the intent to, to benefit internet service providers. Firefly is an internet service provider. If we had our entire system built under this regulation. Uh, the Central Virginia original system plus the body area. On about a fifty million dollar a year total revenue when we're all built out, that we anticipate. And we anticipate a two and a half to five million dollar a year profit. That's the level that we, we, we run then. This bill would give us an extra ten million dollars a year in profit. And it would raise electric rates, ten million dollars a year. Rural electric customers. Even though their electricity stayed the same. So it's a, it's a clear shift.
It's material and unfair.
That's it. And we would ask that uh, we've had several counties pass uh opposition to it. Particularly those who have done the right thing and have partners who are doing the right thing. Broadband should pay for this. Broadband pays for it. Our, our fifty dollars a month that we're charging for a hundred megabit service and. Eighty gigabit. We take the money out of there and pay for the cost of the attachments and, and all that that comes with larger poles and those. So we just think it's, it's, it's not a. Principle bill, it's not fair. And we asked, did you oppose it? Because we oppose it.
History Chair, if I can add a little bit more context to um. Two arguments in favor of the bill. Um, one is related to ARPA. Um, so uh the body twenty two round, as we all know, um, was on almost all ends uh county or state. Um, funded entirely through American Rescue Plan Act, state and local fiscal relief fund uh uh allocations. Um, those have a couple of deadlines that are very, very important. The first is obligation by the end of this year. Um, and the last is spends down by the end of twenty twenty six. Um, the Department of Treasury. Um, as recently as this morning, has reminded everybody that anything not obligated by the end of twenty twenty four. And anything not spent by the end of twenty twenty six no longer exists. Um, and so there is a lot of pressure to meet those demands. Um, one argument for this bill uh that was made, um, was that uh. Delays associated with make ready could put this funding at risk. Um, it is our impression that we've uh spoken with OGA.
You're speaking to the hundred and sixty five days provision.
Correct. Um, it is our uh uh belief um and the uh belief of OGA. And Office of Grants and Administration, uh Grants and Grants Administration, um. That uh this is something of a straw man, um, because the way that these grants have been structured. ARPA money gets spent first. Um, and so even if DHCD gave an extension to all of these uh grants. To the end of twenty twenty six or beyond, um, these are very large projects. And there is very little likelihood that they couldn't find uh ways to spend the ARPA money between now and the end of twenty twenty six. Um, the second item that's concerning um to us is. The use of additional funds to address the um, the rate payer issue. Um, right now, there are a few uh bills and we make reference to one in our notes. Um, that, oh, no, we don't, uh, that um seek to um address that concern of rate pairs. By simply taking funds from somewhere else and applying them to this. One uh such bill takes that uh bead. Uh, those bead funds uh that I addressed uh that I discussed earlier um and literally takes half. Of the non-deployment bead funds and just assigns it to this duty of uh covering the costs of uh other projects. Um, another takes uh general uh fund appropriations and then just extends the body program. Um, with the intention that the body program would then be the mechanism for covering these additional costs. Um, again, um. I, I brought that up as context, um, but also to just share our belief that when it comes to ARPA risks. Um, that is not uh, that, that isn't something that we think is particularly strong of an argument.
And, and I would add, actually, that FCC rule on the hundred and sixty five days. Only covers the first three thousand poles in the request. We requested twenty two thousand poles just in our project, just from Appalachian Power. And another twenty five thousand from Rappahannock. So if we put them in under this. Everything over three thousand goes back to a negotiation between the poll. It, it had. The people who put the bill in have some nice soundbites. But if you look under the hood, it really doesn't address time. That, and I realize I've got opinions on it. I'm sorry I come across that way.
Yes, because you've looked at it harder than any of us have.
Yeah, but they're, yeah, the, they're playing a little loose with some of the facts.
And the. An electric co-op in this scenario, under this bill, not just contract around the new shift of the. Like in, in your partnership. We shifted back to the current status mode. Like, is that not something that is still on the table after this bill? It seems like that actually makes it harder to allocate funding into.
Yeah, so we, we already have agreements with Rappahannock and with Southside that we, we're gonna pay. And that's why we've progressed. One of the, the main ISP who is um pushing this bill. Has, has a contract in Culpeper that runs out the third of February this year. At eighteen months for the bot, body twenty twenty two grant, has not done work on the first pole. Not one in the county is supposed to be finished. They, they have a large project in um. Uh, the northern Shandor Valley area and they've done no work. If you look on the, this, this is all public information. If you look on the body. Uh, dashboard, they've spent zero dollars and done no work. Um, there's some theories. That. They're either behind because they haven't been able to figure out how to do it, or at some point they may be behind because they think there's an opportunity to get some other funding. If they're behind. Um. I, I don't know really all of those reasons. We don't have a need to do anything differently. They can contract. They, they already have contracts with some of the co-ops and could be doing some work. Um, I, this bill is. Is not necessary. It's not a good fit.
If we wanted to uh express our uh. Approval or disapproval of this measure, uh, how would we address that?
If you just wanted to pass a resolution that you're. The broadband authorities against the bill, uh, just something that's simple is fine. There's uh some have been more elaborate and listed some reasons why. But um, the Thomas Jefferson Planning District has said they will take a more active role in opposing the bill. If they hear from their counties that they're in opposition. And they do have lobbyists working down there regularly. Um, so that's part of the reason we're asking our counties to help them by, by letting them know your stance.
Members of the authority, do you all have any questions, uh, comments?
Yeah, shit, I have a question for, for Richie. Um, I mean, maybe this is my, my time in federal government, but like you never get the executive. Um, I wanna know. With this body ought to be doing such a thing without. Board of Supervisors approval, without, I mean, I don't, I don't know how that works. Can, can we issue such a thing?
Um, this is an authority. It's an independent legal entity, um, separate and distinct from the Board of Supervisors. So in that respect, the answer is yes.
If we're doing the wrong thing, they'll appoint different people.
That's a practical answer to it also. So, and I think we have, I'm just thinking historically, we have. Taken positions on certain things, so I.
Yeah, the rubber, I think we did, of course, the rubber.
Trying to, I, I mean, I know the Board of Supervisors, they take positions on legislation and, and uh do that, I. I don't think.
We're unlikely to find ourselves opposed to the Board of Supervisors on this issue.
I don't think this is one of their priorities.
Yeah.
And we have two members here who might be able to chime in.
I mean, I guess you could see there's an is off. I guess we can, the authority can take a position on it. And the question is. Off, I think what you spoke to kind of the track that we have. A third of the Board of Supervisors here presently, um, you have expressed uh. Uh, condemnation, they go, um, which accounts for probably a third board member who is the president thereof. And I would be surprised if we got dramatically different.
I can add one other thing. There, there are several other folks who are opposed for various reasons. Uh, two unions, the IBW and the American Telecommunications Workers are opposed to it because of some safety concerns within it. And the Southern Poverty Law Center is standing up against it because of concerns of the impact in the rural areas on. Uh, which are traditionally, um. Uh, on, on the lower side of the income scale versus the suburban other areas and the potential impact was the electric rates. They're, they're forced to pay versus a broadband choice that they could make.
Did you have a question or comment? I do. Um, so. I've looked at this a, a couple of times and, and I'm confused. Um. First off, let me start out simple. Where does the hundred and sixty five day come in? Cause that's not contained anywhere in the legislation.
It's the FCC regulations. If we're treated under the FCC and it's actually just a guideline, but it's in the FCC regulations.
And those regulations don't currently apply?
Not to electric co-ops. They specifically exclude co-ops for several reasons.
Okay, okay, okay. That, that, that's, that's helpful there.
Yep.
Now, the other part is, is it changes, the changes to definition of rearrangement to, to change it from work performed. At the request of a telecommunications service provider to work necessitated solely by and at the request of a telecommunications. That's, so that's the trigger that imposes all this. So why, I, I explained, I don't quite understand how it's moving the burden if, if that's not there now.
Paragraph H.
H, thank you.
Paragraph H says that if a pole. Um, does not meet present code standards or co-op design standards. And it has to be replaced. On uh, let's. On uh, let's make it simple that that uh, the body project requires to be paid, the the I S P requires to be replaced. That that pole, the cost for that pole will be paid for by the electric call, now this is where we get into the details and they wrote it very cleverly. Uh, so I have a pole, I have five poles in the back of my field Nelson County were put in nineteen sixty nine after Hurricane. They're still there, fifty years old, they serve three homes at the back, did in. If fiber had to be built in telecommunications space forty inches below, every one of those poles would have to be replaced. Today, they work fine for electricity, they're going to work fine another twenty years, we test them every ten years, they do everything necessary. We had to replace those for telecommunications, telecommunications is for the last eighty seven years, they've paid for that. This bill says that flips the day the bill goes through and the electric rate payer pays for those poles because that pole. Would not meet present code, their grandfather, they they work fine, but they don't meet present code. A lot of the rural co-ops have older poles in rural areas because we don't have growth, we don't have a need to change them out. So you end up with that, that's paragraph eight shifts out.
And and you don't meet the definition of, I say, let's not say you, but public cooperatives don't meet the definition of a public utility under. Fifty six two thirty two.
Uh, the ones under fifty six, yeah, and I have to look, but we are a public utility, is there an exclusion for?
No, because H says, notwithstanding another provision of law, a public utility subject to, so.
Yeah, so we are, that is electric co-ops only, that is not an investor. Five thirty two is the.
Yep, so you're not a public utility under fifty six two thirty two.
That's where the carve out comes and I'd have to look at the language, but the electric co-ops are included.
Thank you.
Dominion Power and Appalachian Power are excluded.
Let me look at section fifty six two thirty two, if you don't mind, I know, I'm sorry, this this is important to figuring it out.
Anybody's asked to make a decision, I'd like you to be informed.
There's one of the difficulties here.
Find it here.
Think of what this issue is going to be for enough to look into, so this is all.
Whether or not cooperative is a public utility under fifty six two thirty two. I'm trying to understand the carve out.
Problem is it could have been a court ruling that made that, right, we wouldn't have anything.
I don't have it, yeah.
Readily determining that. Uh, it's not that we don't. We need to get this information on our own.
If if you don't feel comfortable, I understand and don't don't pass for that, that's okay.
I I agree with the concept that. Cooperatives, Dominion should all be treated the same for purposes of how the 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 cost of uh make ready work is done. I just, I don't have enough data here to to be able to to answer the question about how it does it, I understand what you're saying. And I could endorse a a a resolution that said we support any legislation that treats. Cooperatives and Dominion Appalachian Power identically in purposes of of. Make ready work.
I I I would take that to be. Further than that in terms of, I don't support shifting. The cost burden to the electric rate payer.
I agree with that too, yes. I could, I could support that also, so if if we wanted to.
It does appear that this bill would do that.
Right, yeah, if we wanted to do something along those lines, I could support that and then. People could could then determine whether or not it does and then apply that uh recommendation.
Yep, I'm with you, thank you.
So the idea here is this would go to our representatives or go to T J P.
This is just a resolution of our support or or uh, lack of support or condemnation of. This topic. We don't have to send it anywhere, it's just there and then T J P D C has it available going, I'll probably doesn't like this.
But currently, T J P D C has a lobbyist. Ready and armed for this, but they can't act until they have.
They need to be told their constituent members how they feel.
When is that extending?
Well, it has to be done before crossover, right? And it's the opportune time for us to act.
Imagine the protocol would be sharing if we do this resolution, sharing with our local delegation. Of representatives of the state, sharing it with T J P D C, David Wong specifically. Of course, like making the Board of Supervisors. Disparate for. Not for permission or anything, this. Because then, I there's activity at the board level where where board members will reach in and. For expression of support or or opposition. So the the board is very active in this this time period. So this is an executive function.
Where are we, do we have any further questions, comments?
Fundamentally of of this resolution.
Bill, do you want to take a first crack at what we're?
Sure, I would move that we don't support any legislation that moves the cost of make ready work to electric rate payers.
Telecommunications make ready work to. And and can we go further and say that it does appear that H B eight hundred may fall in this category?
Uh, I could say that we do not support H B eight hundred if it. Moves telecommunications costs.
Because of course it could be amended between now and whenever.
Because we're like, we're looking for a resolution that's going to be in the minutes, um, we haven't pre drafted it, but essentially what I'm. Working up is be resolved, um, the broadband authority opposed to each bill, H B eight hundred as drafted to the extent it. Moves the cost of telecommunications and now I'm going to defer to to Bill.
He had other. Communications make ready work.
Make ready work.
The cost of telecommunications make ready work.
To electric rate payers. And if you've written all that down and you'll send it to me, I can add it for the minutes.
Yeah, that, I mean.
Why, I have a question. Do do we need to specify the version of the language, say as of a given date in case it is amended tonight or tomorrow?
I think it's pretty clear, it's as of.
Well, I don't think it's been.
Yeah, well, if you moved it, Bill, can I say?
I shouldn't move anything.
There's any further discussion on this topic?
Well, I'll tell you, if we do this, I will be. Very promptly communicating with supervisors just to let them know, as a courtesy.
And and perhaps we could ask our newest member to communicate this to T J P D C. Uh, then let me call the question, all those in favor, uh, will do this uh by going around the room, Bill? Walden? Mike? Jim? Trevor?
Yes.
But he says yes. Thank you, record will reflect, uh, we're all in favor.
And thank you everyone for indulging me for the.
I think I figured out how the cover, we'll talk after.
Okay, thank you.
And the um, the exact language of that's got here in the minute for the weekend. For when we're coordinating.
I hope I've written this out correctly.
Uh, I can send that out tomorrow by email, so you just so you have it, I'll send that out.
Good, thank you all very much. Uh, we've got another item here, under new business with regard to meeting dates for March and May. Had established meeting dates for March and May and uh, I've given understand that this room is now longer available. Those Board of Supervisors is booting us out. And then it was meeting times. I'm not sure we need to set meetings at this time, it we we can, if you're prepared to do that, but uh, the most important thing is to make you aware. That we're going to have to revise that and certainly by the next meeting. Uh, we ought to change our schedule of meetings, what I would like to have happen in the interim is. We see what other dates are available and we float in emails some meeting dates. So that when we get back together next time, people have had a chance to calendar those things and and look at what's going and what's working, does that make sense for everybody?
I, if if possible for convenience, maybe broadband office could either doodle poll or some other way that you can all. Put it in one into kind of one, one, one process, yeah.
Yeah, we ought to have something to consider at our next meeting to to.
Vote for some dates.
That would be great if if y'all could help us out that way.
Uh, one thing to consider, uh, two forty one is not the only room. Worth just bringing up because we might a propose some dates where we might meet in two thirty five.
Or even Chris Green where we had the.
Yeah, the the thing to consider there is it's harder for um, in person public to attend in uh, two thirty five and certainly in Chris Green. But uh, just uh establishing so that you guys aren't surprised uh that we might send some dates that aren't going to be in two forty one.
If necessary, we'll adapt and overcome.
Right.
Any other business that we need to take up? Hearing any, and is there a motion to adjourn? All those in favor say aye. Thank you all very much, good job.
You're in the J P J?
Have a good one, thank you.